Kevin, thank you for sending me that email today.
You're so welcome, Matt. Okay, everybody, it's 6:30. Please take a seat if you'd like. Damon's running. Ron will join us a little later. We'll let the record show when he enters the meeting, but he will not be here when we begin. This is our agenda meeting. Call to order has been commenced. Everyone's here except for Ron. And where's Norma? Okay, so it looks like everyone's here but Ron and Norma. Tammy, we're gonna start with item number one. Ed, go ahead and start with your municipal services, sir.
All right, well, we got a big one tonight, guys. I don't think much of this is gonna be controversial, but there may, I know there's some of it, it's got some questions. The first thing that we need to do is the Burns Drive overlay. Joe, you wanna come on and tell us about it?
Yeah, thanks, Ed. I apologize for not being there in person, first of all. This, this project is for Burns Drive. It's a mill and overlay. The current asphalt over there is a double overlay on top of the original asphalt. And the overlays have deteriorated so bad that there is no medium level fix to Burns Drive without doing a mill and overlay. We did do an advertisement for bids, and I'm not for sure if it was because of the COVID-19 or what was going on, but we got zero response. Spoke with Ben and the mayor about getting quotes, and they were both fine with it. Ben said that since the advertise for bids failed, that we could use this as option B, basically. And we had two quotes, which was hard to get in itself. One was for the $45,000, and the other one was right around $115,000. So basically, we're looking at going with the lower quote, and this company is very reputable. They've been around for a very long time, and they've done work in and around Cabot for quite some time. And if anybody's got any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Okay, let me, let me start out with committee. James, are you there?
Yes, he's here.
Yeah.
Okay, you got any questions for Joe on this at all?
No, I don't. He is not so far as to like.
Okay, I didn't understand that, other than the "no, I don't," so.
No questions, Ed.
Okay, good deal. Matt, how about you, bud?
No, sir, nothing.
All right, I think this is pretty straightforward on this. Joe, has that company done work for us before? The name looked familiar.
I believe in the past, Ed, they might have. I'm not for sure. I don't remember anything directly that they've done since I've been here, but they've been in and out of Cabot on numerous private, and I believe they might have actually done part of a state job at one time. I'm not for sure, but.
You know, I think that's, yeah, I think that's what it was. I think they were contractors on a state job that come through here. I knew, I thought I recognized the name when it come through, and I thought maybe they had done some stuff for us before. The bid looks reasonable to me. You've got a bond and the whole nine yards in here, so it looked good to me. And if nobody on the committee's got any questions on it, then I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to send this on.
Got a motion to send it on to the council. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, Tammy? Yes?
Yes.
All right, our next thing. Laura, you're up on this one. It's gonna be the Heritage Meadows annexation. I looked through it. It looked like all the paperwork had been done. It looks like that they had actually made two submittals to the county on it. Everything looked like it was signed and backed. So go ahead, Laura, if you would. And I do have a question whenever you get through.
Laura, before you begin, everybody in the audience as well, we have a mic up here and wipes. So if you'd wipe the mic before and after you speak, that would be great. Keep everybody safe and clean. And Laura, get, you're ready when you're ready.
This is an annexation for Heritage Meadows. This came through the planning commission a few months ago. It's property that is located on Camp Brown Road just past Prairie Creek subdivision. The developers did submit a final class to the planning commission last month for half of the lots. So they are ready to get this development going. It is a, I think, a 72 lot total subdivision. And like I said, they've already, they've got all their paperwork in order. We're just ready to move it on so that we can get this into the city limits.
Everything looked in order wherever I looked it over, and I didn't have any questions on it. It's it's already gone through the planning commission. The county's already gave it over to us. I do have one question on it. Services that we're providing is fire police, city sewer, and city trash pickup. Water's gonna be provided by Ward. Have we got our, everything in place with Ward to provide us with the readings for our sewer?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Do we have everything in place with Ward to provide us with the water usage readings for our sewer building?
As far as I know, that's, that would be coordinated with the Water Works.
Right, we don't have anybody there tonight from Water Works?
He said, he just said that everything is in place.
Tim Joyner said it's all good together.
Ready to roll, okay. That was the only question I had on it. Matt, you got anything?
No, sir, nothing.
James, how about you?
Oh, it keeps us from having an empty spot between the H. Coates Elementary School and our current boundary, so this fills that in, and it's a good fit, yes.
Now, Laura, this is a single owner request, correct? It's a developer request?
Yes, it's 100% developer request.
100% developer request, okay. All right, if everybody's satisfied on committee, I need a motion.
I'll go ahead and make that motion to send it on.
Thanks, Matt. I'll second it. Got a motion and second, need a roll call, please. Yes?
Yes.
All right, our next one is the telecommunications contract. I've got a question on that one, whenever we get ready to do that.
I've got Roger come to podium.
So Roger, take off whenever you're ready, brother.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm trying to make this fairly quick. We got a people points items here, but we recently had a bid for our wide area network, voice over IP, and internet services for the city. We're looking at upgrading these services because we're currently at the end of term on our existing contract. Part of this redesign is gonna be to get more bandwidth at each location to also enable all of our sites to work independently. So they're all interconnected, but as of right now, part of one of the issues we run into with our existing network is if the city hall goes down for any particular reason, it takes the other sites down with it. As part of this redesign and this package, we would have independent operation of these other sites. Moreover, as I said a second ago, we will be increasing bandwidth to each site. Right now, it looks as if about a tenfold increase at a lot of our remote sites, which will help these guys quite a bit. Also, in the contract is new hardware for every location, so we'll be getting new phones for desks. We'll also get some new network hardware for routers and things like that as part of this project. With the new services, they are cloud hosted. The voice over IP is cloud hosted, so the benefit there is part of this redesign includes replacing aging out equipment. And with this new voice over IP service being cloud hosted, we want to aging equipment in the future, we'll just use the service as normal, all those upgrades are done on the back end. Another feature is we will be adding a new location. We currently have eight sites. We'll be adding the new Cabot Senior Center location, the Peak Center, that will be brought online and brought into the wider area network with the rest of our sites, be able to benefit from all of those. One of the reasons we went with Ritter was because they not only were the most competitively priced, but they were also the only provider that were able to offer fiber directly to every location. A lot of our sites are kind of off the beaten path and don't necessarily have fiber availability from a lot of vendors, and but Ritter was willing to do that for us. All these buildout costs are rolled into our payments, so there's no upfront cost with this bid. We'll just be able to pick up whenever the project starts or whenever the project is in place with current funding. The, the bid ended up being in line within a few thousand dollars of roughly what we're paying right now for all existing services, and that's including adding the new location, increasing bandwidth, new hardware everywhere. So fortunately, I won't have to do any budget amendments for that. We'll just be able to roll forward with it. The biggest crux of this project, I would say, is we, to physically build the fiber to all these locations, we have probably 30 to 90 days at every site. So I'd like to, you know, if this does move to council, I'd like to see if we could maybe move it forward quickly just to try to get this done before the end of the calendar year, but that'll come later. I just wanted to throw that out there. Any questions?
Yeah, I've got three. Number one question is the new support center for animal control is not in here? Is it gonna be added sometime in the future, or are we just gonna go with standard stuff as it is now?
The support center for animal control? The new location?
Okay, I'm sorry. I had trouble hearing what you said there, but yes, the new center for animal control, we chose not to add that in currently because the site is not a permanent location for them. We didn't want to set up this level of infrastructure for that site if they aren't gonna be staying there permanently, so we chose to leave them as is currently.
Okay, second question. There are two quotes in here for Station 4. Is that a mistake, or is it two different levels of service quoted differently, or what?
No, sir, that was a mistaken scanning, I believe. There was only one quote submitted, I believe. It just got double posted somehow, and when the packet was combined.
Okay, and the third one, I noticed that Highway 5 seems to be a little bit out of line with the rest of them. I'm assuming that's a surcharge on mileage?
Yes, the, the way the quotes are priced out, we may be able to change billing later, but the way the quotes are priced out is based on the buildout cost for each site. So the monthly costs you see are because of the distance they have to go to build the fiber out to that location.
That's what, that's what I think.
It's more expensive relative to other sites. The service level will be the same.
All right, anybody on the committee got any questions? Matt?
I had one, but you already asked it, so I'm at number four. So this seems like a win-win-win.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. It looks good to me. It, it kinda surprised me about the overall cost on it. I did not expect it to be, I don't know, it just looked good to me. James, have you got anything?
I do have a question for fire employees for future connectivity for the adaptive street lighting. Will we be able to handle it through this system?
Yes, sir, that was part of the family matter of this upgrade. The increased bandwidth and everything that we'll have out in our street department is gonna help tremendously. That will be able to provide us the service level we need to operate all those facilities out there.
And Ed, as you know, we've been needing this for a while.
Oh, yeah.
I wanna commend Roger. I've been owning for a year. We've been working on this for a year to try to get the city up to 21st century. And I commend him for, you know, being so detailed to making sure we dot our i's across your t's, so.
Good job, Roger. Good job.
It's the right move. There is no question about it. I looked at your downtime schedule on that, Roger, and your, what do they call it, phase one downtime? The lowest, the lowest severity is eight hour, be up to eight hour uptime. I don't know, there's too many disclosures in here for me to get to that real quick, but you know what I'm talking about? Is that, is that acceptable to you?
Yes, sir. Those are pretty standard from the industry, but those are.
I don't care about standard. Are they acceptable?
Yes.
Well, I wish I could get to that. Next time, just put one set of disclosures in it, because they all mean same stinking thing. I think that's all I had. Matt, have you got any other questions? Anything else come to mind? Norma, you got any questions on this one? I wanna go around the bend on this one.
No, I'm good.
Kevin, how about you, buddy?
I'm good.
Anybody else there? Mayor, if you wanna call them off, see if anybody's got any questions, because I don't know who else there.
Just one little question. Can't just expound on it. Notice that the cable service equipment that, I guess, of the city, just according to city, during the next TV expansion sports program, so they got a little cable in the mix?
Yes, that actually wasn't part of the initial bid. I think that was something they kind of threw in there for some flavor, but looking at the pricing, it's relative to what we're paying for the cable that we have in other places. If you notice, it's not at every location, because it was kind of peppered in on the sites that already had some existing service. So we may look at adding that later or completely migrating to their service for TV as well.
That's great. Wonder.
Roger, this will also include service over to the training room and all of that, correct?
Yes, sir.
Good, because that's, that, that needs some help over there.
Okay, the next person I have, are you good, Damon?
Yeah.
Okay, James is next. You got anything else?
Nope, that, he's answered my questions.
Doug?
You said, you said that this, each of these sites are gonna be a conference, not dependent on the other.
Correct. I mean, we'll still all be interconnected on a wide area network, which allows us to share, you know, data and voice and everything. However, one of the things we're gonna be building into this is we're getting away from hub and spoke, is what it's called where we are now. All the current data travels through city hall and out to the web and that sort of thing. So if city hall has an issue, it kind of takes down everyone else. So in this new scenario, everyone will be able to operate in the event that one of the sites fails.
Okay, so in fact, it's also a safety efficiency thing.
Mayor, could you repeat the question? I can hear Roger, but I can't hear Mr. Warner.
Basically, his question was, are we all linked together, or do they work independently of each other? And basically, that's what we designed in this new system. So if city hall goes down, it doesn't take down everything else. And another reason why we did that is because, you know, we had to put fiber in for this new traffic signal upgrade that's gonna help with our traffic issues. And so if, you know, if traffic signal went down, that doesn't mean the rest of the city's gotta go down. So it's, it works independently of each other. That was his question.
At, at one time, Mayor, and it hasn't been under your regime, but under some previous regimes, there was talk about having the ability for Station 4 to be a backup dispatch site in case something happened there at city hall. I don't know what your plans are, if any. We've not had that discussion. My question to Roger is this, if we decide to make Central Station a backup dispatch or Station 4 or whatever, will this be able to carry that as well?
Yes, sir. Specifically speaking to that, the current bandwidth that city hall is operating on is what the future bandwidth for all the remotes are gonna be. So
Okay.
It's a 50 make, 50/50 circuit, so 50 up, 50 down. So the new bandwidth for all the other sites, including that station, will also be 50 make circuits. So, yeah, going forward, we would be able to operate just like we are in our one.
Okay, good. Good. Mayor, is anybody else there have any questions, brother?
Uh, no, sir.
This is a pretty big deal, and I wanna go around the bend on it, make sure that everybody's covered. All right, if there, if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion.
I'd make a motion that we move this to full council.
I have a motion, need a second.
I'll second that.
There you go. Got a motion second, Tammy? Yes?
Yes.
Hmm, yes.
All right, pass this, goes to council.
Thank you.
All right, item number four, changes to the city code. Laura, I think you're on on this one, aren't you? Yeah.
She got a cleaner mic.
Okay.
You good? Oh, here, I cleaned it. Okay. I didn't see him.
Laura, just give us the, oh, why don't you give us a 25 cent review on this? I think everybody has had a chance to look it over. There's some changes in here that probably needed to be made a long time ago. I do know there's a couple of questions gonna be coming your way, so if you would, just kind of hit the high spots, and then we'll address the questions, okay?
There are seven code revisions. I try to make it as easy as possible for everyone to understand the simplest way, so I put the current code, and then I put the revised code in red after it. So the current code revision is on accessory buildings. A lot of the code revisions have to do with easements, defining them. And then there's, there's one code specifically on the parking of trailers that I know we've had numerous issues on. I totally revamped that section so that it is, now it can be an enforceable code. And then the rest, like I said, the rest of the codes are easements related to storm drainage, so that we can define it better. So how was that for your 25 second?
That was, I think, fantastic. Thank you. Let me start with the committee. James?
The only question I had was on section 5.4.3, designs for easements. And Ms. Noble answered that question. Fence scanning. What I wanted to avoid was the formation of alleys fences having to be 10 foot off the property line. That would take away 10 foot of usable space of a property, plus it required two sets of fences, plus it would create a no man's land. And, and it's, she clarified, it doesn't mean that we have to have an alleyway. It's just fence, and we'll have to be at their risk if it's on in the, in the easement. So it's clarified, and I'm happy with it now.
Yeah, it does specify that fences are prohibited. However, if one is installed, the, the property owner does take the risk upon himself.
Yes.
Basically, what you're wanting to accomplish on this is shared fences on account of maintenance issues, I'm assuming. Is that correct?
No, not in all instances. We've had some issues with drainage. In fences puncturing our drainage system, which have clogged the drainage system. We've also had issues with trees being installed over our drainage system, which have taken over our drainage system that we've had, the city has put out countless dollars to repair. So we're trying to prevent as much damage to our infrastructure as possible.
All right, Mayor, I think we need to go around the horn on this one, too, because everybody's affected in every ward on it, so why don't you go ahead and handle the ones that are there?
Okay, Damon? Damon's good.
All right.
Might have been answered. I'm good.
James is now good. Doug? James, or Doug is good. Go ahead, Ed.
Matthew?
I know we had an opportunity to put in our comments earlier, but after further review, in number three, concerning the trailers, paragraph B at the very end, the last sentence where it says about shall not be occupied either temporarily or permanently while parked or stored in the area. And I'm wondering if we can make any sort of exemption, possible exemptions on this for extenuating circumstances to come to mind, say, if Uncle Joe and Aunt May come into town for a family wedding, and they don't end up having a place where they can stay, could we not let them spend a night or two out in the trailer? And then the other one that came into the forefront, an example with a close friend of mine, who, when they were met with Hurricane Laura a couple of weeks ago, they vamused out of Louisiana and came up this way, and all the hotels from Louisiana, Texarkana, you name it, up till Little Rock, they were far and few between on hotel rooms. So I, I just wonder if we can have some sort of an exemption possibly for not more than maybe a week where someone could utilize their travel trailer to house someone temporarily?
Well, you, you don't realize how many calls we get in city hall about people that misuse.
I do.
Now, I would, I would be okay with doing some sort of permit free to them, but they gotta inform city hall. It's a two or three day permit. We'll allow them to park there, but, you know, only for that amount of time.
And we can. I agree, Mayor. I've gotten phone calls, too, so I, I'm fully aware, but I just thought, you know, if there is a circumstance where it's in black and white, there's no gray area, maybe we could make a temporary provision.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a fair thing to do, because you know, your neighbors, some neighbors, you got good neighbors, and I know your mom and dad are coming in, they have a trailer, they don't care. But you might not have that one out of 20 in your neighborhood that does care, and all they have to have is that special use permit.
Right. Okay, thank you.
And I agree with the permit wise. That way, our office is allowed to actually be there in the wild lane code. If we put it in this code that we can do it under special circumstances, well, then everything's gonna become a special circumstance.
Norma, you got anything?
Well, I evidently I don't have the code in my packet for the trailers. Is it, what number is it? Three point?
It's code revision number three.
What was it, Laura? I'm sorry.
Code revision number three, so if you go in order. You look at the
Section 4.9, 2.14.
Look at the top, it'll say number three, code revision.
Well, I can't find, but anyway, here's my question.
It's 4.914, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what was it, Mayor?
4.914. 4.914.
Right at the very top, it says number three, code revision, current code, section 4.9.14.
I don't, I don't have, anyway, okay. Here was my question from reading before, previous. In there, we required a certain type of drive. A pad with concrete or heavy material, stuff like that. I mean, is that putting more expense on the homeowner? And is it really required to have that type of concrete?
Well, it's currently in the code now that you have to have a hard surface.
A hard surface, but it doesn't say, it doesn't, it just says hard surface. It doesn't say asphalt or, or concrete to to be able to have heavy, it tells the type of concrete, in other words.
In, in this current code, it states such trailers must be parked on a paved surface unless behind a fence. If it's behind a fence, you can park, you can park it gravel, you can concrete it, you can put wood blocks under it.
Laura, could you read the, the new requirement that requires the concrete? Please?
It says such trailers must be parked on a paved surface. Doesn't specify concrete or asphalt. It says a paved one. It says a paved one.
It says paved service, but Norman, we've been working with people in our office. What's the latest guy? He did what? Remember he uh did something himself, poured some bags-
He did like a concrete overlay with gravel and then he did this I don't remember what it was called, but he, he went to local hardware store and put this application over it that he come, um, that turned it into a concrete surface. It did not, he didn't pour a concrete pad. He put gravel down and then he mixed this other stuff with it to create a concrete pad. It was a lot less expensive.
Yeah, very, very less.
Down further, you know, it, the intensity uh for traffic use, you know, shall be uh, a concrete hot big surface or a double surface treatment or a concrete surface. So it can be asphalt or concrete.
Okay, Ben, I just read it. And then other question I had was on the, I think y'all answered on the drainage easements for me. I think we got it all covered. I think my other question was answered with James, so I'm good.
Kevin?
Uh, no questions.
All right, Mayor, you got any other comments you want to make on it?
Uh, no, sir. It's just, we're trying to figure out what works best, that's fair for everybody.
These are, these are some pretty good changes, and Norman knows we have faulties for a while. A lot of these are gonna address some of the problems that we've had that has been inherited over the years. Uh, some of them are, are new, some of them are gonna require getting used to. I've got one question. Is Ben there?
Yes, sir.
Ben, could the mayor not, whenever there is a emergency, so to speak, like what Matt was addressing with the hurricane and everything, could the mayor not use his administrative powers to go ahead and permit a, a short term on this without us having to go back in and do any code revisions? Could that not be at his discretion?
Yes, sir. It absolutely could. What this would do is yes, sir, it absolutely could. What this would do is more, more like the process uh into a formal permit process, but without the permit language in there, yes, the mayor could exercise his discretion, unfortunately, yes, sir.
Well, if that could be, you know, if that can be done that way, I'd rather ha- handle it that way than make a change to this code, because it's gonna have to go back to a public hearing if we do that. So we don't need to do that. We need to leave it as it is now, but the way it's come to us from the planning commission through the public hearing and everything. So if that could be done like that, um, write up a procedure on that, on how to deal with emergency displacements or something like that and, and uh, you know, for the review of the council and then let it be the discretion of the mayor to do it, would be my suggestion, instead of putting that in the code, if that's workable. Mayor, are you okay with something along those lines?
Yeah, I mean, I was just trying to put that in there to be fair, because, you know, if you're, if you're-
I agree. No, I agree.
Laws came in town and want to stay three or four days, you just say, I need a three or four day permit. Somebody, your neighbor calls griping about it, we can say, hey, he got a permit, it's legal, leave him alone, you know?
Well, and Matt's right. I mean, I, I was in the hotel business through a couple of hurricanes down there. You will be absolutely amazed the number of people that end up in Little Rock, because there's nothing else between here and there. Absolutely amazed. And uh, I mean, at one time in the hotel, our hotel was full, and we literally let them do dry camping out on our back parking lot, because they had no other place to go. It, it becomes a real problem, it becomes an issue, and if they got family that they need to go somewhere, that's better than having them on the side of the street, in my opinion. And if we could accommodate something like that as an administrative matter, is what I was looking at, instead of having it as a code revision, I think it would be better. And that's why I was asking Ben that.
Well, what we'll do then is we'll just hold this out in case there is a code revision that we need to have a public hearing on, and we'll put it in then.
That'll work. If we can do it without that, then let's pass this thing on to the council and get it done, provided the committee wants to do that. I'm ready for a motion.
Great. Ed, I have one more question.
Okay.
Does the administrative, like, I have a, I have a neighbor in my neighborhood right now, her in-laws in, and there are motorhomes parked in her driveway. And they're just here visiting for a week, so could we not accommodate that also? I mean, there is no-
That's what we were talking about. That's what we were talking about. These short-term uh family stays or emergency stays or something like that, you know, that, that's what we, that was exactly what we're talking about. I, identical to it. Yes, ma'am.
Then my, my other question is, with the new fence ordinance, how are, how's our code enforcement gonna enforce it when we don't have permitting on it yet? As far as I know, we don't permit unless they change that. Have they, Laura, or Mayor?
No permit.
If my neighbor puts up, or if I put up a fence tomorrow, I don't need a permit, and if I violated all of these new regulations, no one would know. So-
Then you'd be, then you'd have to fix it or be fined, or we'd have to fix it.
If the code officer finds it. I mean, you know what I'm saying? It could be, if they're not permitted, we give them an extra means to check it out before the person has to incur the extra cost of moving it.
Not that I want to deal with a better permit, but-
I know. I mean, even if, it doesn't even have to be a charge, just a, a free permit, just so that that person wouldn't have to incur going and change, pulling down the fences you already put up, because it's in the wrong place, because he just didn't know.
Another thing that we'll just have to educate our citizens on.
Mayor, if I could feel one more question?
Sure.
I know we, we addressed this when we were working with the RV center that went in about people staying or living inside the uh campers or RVs, and it was a health code violation of the state. We may want to check into that before we permit somebody to stay. Parking is one thing, but uh we might want to consider that before we do a permit for someone to actually live.
So you're telling me we don't want a cousin Eddie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they're not gonna be able to run it out to a manhole, that's for certain, so that would be one of the things that-
Be their own problem, they have to dump it, right?
Any other questions? All right, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion, move it to the full council.
Need a second?
And a second.
Got a motion and second to move it to the full council unless legal needs to hold it up for a code revision. If what we've been talking about can be done administratively, which I don't see any reason why not, then we move it on. If not, well, Ben and the mayor can work that out for us, okay? Need a roll call.
Ed?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Okay, Laura, you're gonna you're gonna get, you're gonna get the gold star for tonight.
Hey, Ed, can I interject here in a second?
Absolutely.
We've got a pretty big audience tonight, bigger than we've had in six months, and I know people are watching online, and I bet somebody's getting confused on, three of you are voting. And we can go and explain that the new ordinance that was put in place, ordinance seven of two thousand twenty, put people in different committees, and there's three people in the committee, and a majority of the committee can send something to council. So that's why you only see three people voting, the municipal services committee.
Yeah, there's not any permanent action down here tonight. This is simply a gate to open the door to send it on to the council where the real work takes place. That's all it is. Don't leave here tonight saying, well, they changed it, we can't put trailers out, we've not done that. We're just moved it on to Monday after next to talk about it and make it get serious about it. You're exactly right, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Laura, we got two condemnations. You want to roll them into one explanation, or you want to handle them one at a time? Doesn't matter to me.
It doesn't matter to me either. Probably do two different ones, since one is a partial and one is a residential.
Got it, go.
The first one is eight oh one South Pine Street. This is the strip center that is um located behind what most of us know is the old Byheart. Um, I actually received a call from the owner today. I was out of the office when she called. I tried to return her phone call. She did not answer. She was unaware of receiving either one of these filings. She received my letter that was dated August twenty seventh. Um, cause she had, she was out of town. I tried to, like I said, I reached, when she called the office today, I reached out to her to talk to her, but she did not return my call. So as far as speaking with the owner on this one, um, we've not heard anything back until today.
And all you got today was just a phone call, and that was it? Just a one-way phone call, correct?
Correct. I did call her back, but I was unable to reach her. Um, as you can see in the pictures, this property is in some major need of help. So um it is very very much in disrepair. So-
Yeah, I think at one time this property burnt, didn't it? Burnt on the inside?
Yeah, yeah.
It is, I think one quarter of it did um catch fire.
Oh.
As far as I'm aware, a couple of pictures, it does not look like anything has been done.
This one also is really getting to be prevalent in the public. Uh, I've gotten a couple of texts and a couple of phone calls about it. I got one email, and I did forward that to uh, to the committee and to Laura. And uh, I mean, the public is, is concerned about this one, so this one needs to needs to have some work done on it, or, or we need to take some action on it, in my opinion. Let me ask Ben a question. Ben, with the assertions that the property owner made to Laura today, I understand with a one-way conversation, are you satisfied with service on this for us to be able to move forward?
Yes, sir, I am. Given all the uh legal notice that we, that we get, I'm satisfied with it.
Okay, good enough. That answered my question. Anybody got any questions on it? Again, this is a citywide deal on this. Let's go around the horn. Let me start here with Kevin.
Uh, if I remember correctly, is this the same one where the car wash was torn down about eight years ago?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, it's, it's the same property, so, okay, that's all my question is.
That's it. Norma, how about you there?
No, I'm, I'm good. I mean, it's obvious on the report, so I'm good.
Yeah, the reports are more than thorough on that, and if Ben's satisfied with the surf, the service on it, then we need just to answer the questions and then move forward with it. Matt?
Thank you, Mr. Long. I've received numerous phone calls uh about this, so I, I recommend we move forward.
Mayor, you got anything you want to say, then you call and roll there for me, buddy.
Yes, sir, I will. Damon? Damon's good. James?
I visited this property. I don't see it being re- brought back up to code again. I, I move for condemning the property.
Doug? Good. Yep, uh, Ed, this has been a long time coming.
Yeah, it has been.
Could have been done years ago, but uh, anyway, we'll see what happens.
All right, guys, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion-
Send it on to council.
I got a motion, need a second.
I'll second that.
I got a motion and second, send it to council. Need a roll call.
Matt?
Matt?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes, ma'am. All right, our next thing is waiver of sidewalk on the proposed Dollar General off of Highway five. Laura? Are you on this one?
We don't.
The second uh condemnation property.
We gotta do the condemnation of three sixteen.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I got a feeling it's gonna be the same thing, but let's go for it. Go for it, Laura.
It pretty much is the same thing. This property is located at three sixteen South First Street. This is a residential house. Um, as you can see, there's been multiple mails, mailers sent out to the homeowners of the property. There has been no response. I have gotten no response from either one of the owners listed of record. Uh, we've sent out a structural violation letter back in August. I sent out my letter at the end of August. I had no um response from them. Both letters were um signed for, so I know they did receive them. I'm ready to move forward if y'all are.
Okay, Ben, you satisfied with service?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right, Matt, you got any questions?
No, sir. I went and walked around this property. I just can't imagine anybody trying to reside in it.
I don't think there's any way it can be brought back up. Norma?
I'm good.
Kevin?
We're all with it.
Mayor?
Damon? Damon's good. James?
I'm good.
James is good. Doug's good.
All righty, let's do a motion on her.
I'll make a motion, have to move this on to full council for condemning this property.
Second.
Second. You got a motion and second to move it to the full council? Terny's indicated he's good with service. I need a vote.
Matt?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes. All right, now let's get to my sidewalk. Laura?
Um, this property is for a Dollar General site that did go before the planning commission last month. The site plan was approved with contingencies as well, along with the preliminary plot. They have asked for a waiver of sidewalks only along Highway five. And as everyone knows, only waiver of sidewalks, they must come before y'all. Um, in the packet, you can see that there are letter that they proposed on why they are asking for the um waiver of the sidewalks along um Highway five. It does not say that they cannot install them according to um ADA compliance. They're just stating that there aren't any sidewalks within a close vicinity. And as many people have said, sometimes we have sidewalks to nowhere, but if we don't put those sidewalks to nowhere, nobody can ever connect to them as well.
I've got one question, and it has nothing to do with this property. It has to do with the adjacent property, the one that's on the other side of Spring Valley. Why did that sidewalk just die there and not, not follow the, not come down in front of the whole property? Does anybody know?
Thank you for asking that question.
You're welcome. I don't, I don't anticipate anybody having that answer, and I'm not throwing rocks at anybody.
No, I just, I, I wondered that same thing when I looked at it.
I'm just wondering if it was a uh I, I just wondered if it's something that we overlooked, if it was supposed to have been done and the building needed to be finished up, or construction wasn't quite done, and when it was finished, why it just kind of drifted off into never, never land to see. Laura, I, I hate to do this, because you're so busy anyway, but is there any way you could kind of research that to find out it, what the deal is on it?
Oh, of course I can.
See if there's, you know, see if it's something that the city dropped?
I could almost bet that that is a two lot relevant, commercial development. And that entrance on the north side of that development is part of the shopping center. And probably the reason that the sidewalks weren't continued is that lot has never been developed. That's just a hypothetical thing that I throwing off the top of my head.
But that bill, that building is completed, though, all the way to their property line. That is an island in front there. It's a landscape island in front. There's not, that's not a building site. That's what I was wondering too, then I pulled it up and looked at it, and boy, they might could put an outhouse on that, but that'd be the only thing that could put on it. So I just, I, I don't know. I mean, I don't know. It just looked odd to me, and that, that's the reason I'm asking.
Ed, if I, Ed, if I could jump in real quick, I think you're on the right track on that. If I remember right, the reason why that parking lot has got that little edge on it was for connectivity to an any future development on that other parcel, because R dot would not give another entrance cut between Spring Valley and that north entrance into that um little strip mall area there.
It ended up with, it, yeah, it ended up with two entrances, one off of five and one off of Spring Valley, instead of two off of five.
Right, and that was, if, if I remember correctly, that was meant to provide access from that entrance into a future development, if it ever came to that second parcel out there.
Well, see, Joe, that, that's the reason I asked that question. If you look at it, if you pull that up and look at it, it looks like that's exactly what it was. They, they run that down there and stopped it where they anticipated a south entrance would be, and then nothing- And then nothing ever happened from there. So I, I'm just, anyway, it was just a question that come up. It just looked odd, and I was just asking a question. Kevin, you got any questions on it?
I have no questions. It, it would take quite a bit for me to vote to waive a sidewalk in the first place. And if it goes to council, I'll probably vote no to it. I'll just put that out there right now. I don't vote to waive sidewalks unless there's some kind of extreme thing that has to take place for it not to be. I'm just not for it at all.
They're already gonna do sidewalk on that lot anyway. My understanding, they're gonna put one down Spring Valley. Is that not correct, Laura?
That's correct.
All right, so they're just gonna come around the corner and then go on down Highway 5. Norma? I think I know how you feel about it, too, but.
All right. For council, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of like, I'm like Kevin. I prefer to have a sidewalk. However, it is a state highway. If state highway tells them they can't have it, you'll be better.
That's out of our control if, you know, if superior government to us tells us, you know, we can't, we can't override them.
Right. Have them put it inside their parking lot.
Well, and then there's.
Sidewalk shown outside of the right of way. It's not showing.
It does.
Okay, okay.
Another thing we could go to Dollar General back with, Ed, is just tell them, I mean, we can go for the vote, see what y'all are gonna vote, but also if we get Centennial Bank sold, or someone comes in there, then we'll require them to put a sidewalk.
A sidewalk in, yeah, yeah.
So.
Oh, I, it's, it's not gonna hurt my feelings if the council says no on it, because, you know, I, there's been times here where we wished that we'd have put them in, regardless of being a half a block long or whatever. Norma knows what I'm talking about. Matt knows. Kevin knows. You know, three, four years later, we come back and boy, we sure wish we'd had those put in type deals, so. All right, Matt, I'm sorry. You got any questions, buddy?
Okay, I'll, I'll save preaching my sermon about this for the full council. But, yeah. No, no more comment at this time.
All right, Mayor, you, you wanna do the round robin there in your room?
Damon? Okay. Damon, Damon's question was basically what I asked. If someone was to rent that place or buy that place from Centennial Bank, they would be required to bring that up to code because it sat empty for so long, so.
Absolutely.
Then there would be a connection.
If I'm not mistaken, I think Centennial Bank is occupying it. You want highway five?
Yes, they are. They're using it for office, offices.
They have offices in there now.
Okay. So, so it wouldn't meet the standard then if someone came in at the bank, right? But if it's a different type of business, they have to bring it up. Yeah, gotcha. James?
I do have a question whether RDOT will allow sidewalks along the state highway. Because I know we ran into this with Dairy Queen. They would not allow sidewalks to go in. And if you look at.
If they're outside their right of way, they can't. They don't, shouldn't have any jurisdiction to tell us.
This is outside.
It's outside.
Sounds like their right of way will come.
And that could have been the case with Dairy Queen. It could have been inside the right of way.
Was in the right.
Right, right. Anything else, James?
Nope.
Doug? Doug's good.
All right, native vote, native motion.
Make the motion to send this on to full council.
I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. I need a vote.
Matt?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes, ma'am. All right, our next thing. Laura, I think you can take a breath for a minute, bud. Thank you, Laura, by the way. Do appreciate it. Great, great reports. The things that were sent out in the packet, especially on the condemnations, were extremely helpful to me, anyway. I just thought, I just thought it was really good, and I do appreciate your hard work on it, because it's not easy to do. Thank you. All right, our next one is changed to the animal section to the city code. Mr. Wheeler?
Mike's approaching the stage.
What we're looking at here on this ordinance change, simple change, but it makes a big difference. Where our ordinance is currently set up, all fees are mandatory. And with our new change in, in focus with the animal service, we're being more community oriented, less punitive. Then some of the programs we're gonna put in, we would have to come back to city council with every single community program we wanted to put in. For example, we were looking to put in what's called the First Ride Home Program, to where if a citizen's dog or cat is microchipped and licensed with the city, and we happen to pick it up running loose, this will allow us to take it back to the owner the first time without charging them the impound fees. There are anything licensing and microchipping. This would allow us to do that. But the way the ordinance is currently written, if we pick the animal up, it's impounded with a $20 fee, $15 if we don't have proof of vaccinations on top of that, and then $5 to pay until they pick it up. So it would also save us space, the shelter, and time for having to bring it home. But with our new focus, we need a little flexibility in our program.
And this gets aligned with, and I, I don't know what Mike has shared with some of you, but we're selected, and you might go and talk about the program, we're selected, one of 10 across the nation.
Sure, I guess we haven't had a city council meeting in person since then. City of Cabot was selected one of 13 cities nationally to be part of the HOS program, Human Animal Support Services. We're by far the smallest city. The rest of them would be El Paso, Texas, Washington DC, Houston Dallas, Texas, Kansas City, Missouri, Sacramento, California, LA, things of that nature. So it's been a real honor for us. There are so many Zoom meetings a week, and we're making big changes. Along with those changes, it's becoming more focused on community. For example, since we've taken over, and in the last four weeks, we've provided over 25,000 pounds of food to citizens in the city. So these are donated food. Obviously, it doesn't cost the city any money, but these are programs we're putting forward. Just on out there.
Yeah, and one of the things with the, the dog, like if you, if somebody found a dog, we may have them in the fire stations or police station or city hall. They can come up and we'll stick it under the, the little scanner. Somebody can bring it in, stick it and go, oh, that's Joe Smith's dog at 14 Mulberry. And they'll take the dog and deliver it to him. So you kind of know whose dog is, it's kind of a community oriented program.
We're currently raising money. We're almost there. We're a couple hundred short of 15 microchip scans. Those will be at all the fire stations, other businesses throughout the community, like Sephora and Pets, some of the feed stores. When we are not open, people can run strays by there, scan them, hoping if they have a chip, then we'll be able to get them back till Friday night rather than Monday morning.
In which we all know that citizens of Cabot and other places love their fur babies. So it's, it's a win-win for Cabot and for our community.
Mayor, our next work session, the October work session. If we don't have an agenda for this committee, as heavy as it was tonight, I would like for Mike to give about a 15-minute presentation on this new program. I think he's gonna have his feet on the ground enough to be able to do that, what the philosophy is behind it, and it's, it's eye-opening. It's, it's an entirely different way to approach animal services. It, it's more of a family service. I don't know if y'all heard how many pounds of feed he said that he'd given out in the last four weeks. We have found that a lot of the dumped dogs, and then a lot of the dogs that are surrendered to pounds, are simply, just simply because they can't feed them. They don't want to get rid of them. They want to maintain that family, so to speak. But they don't have any other thing to do. They don't know what else to do. That's where that building down here on Second Street is gonna come in. It's gonna be valuable to this community. That's where those resources are gonna be made available. That's where fence repairing, those kinds of things are gonna be made available so that they don't have to abandon their dogs, so they don't have to open the door and holler, get. You know, we don't want that happening here. We don't want them down at that town. We don't. We want to keep them in the home. And they, nine times out of 10, they want them in that home. I'll shut up. I'll let Mike do it. He does a better job than I will. But it's an important, important part of our community here. That is another step forward. It's another innovative thing that Cabot takes on. And we seem like we set the curve on that over and over and over again. And Animal Services has been a leader. It needs to be. It's an important part of the conversation here in this town, has been for years, will continue to be. So that's where we stand on that. Has anybody got any questions about these changes? Understand where we're coming from and why this first ride home deal? You know, we get, we pick one up and take him down there, and it's an elderly woman that has it. She hasn't got the money to go bail that dog out, but she wants him. So, you know, we get him back home. It's the right thing to do. It's what we need to do with this. I'm, I'm 110% for it. I guess you can tell that, though. Anybody got any questions on it? Anybody? Let me have a motion.
I love the way that Mike thinks outside the box, and he's bringing great ideas to us. So I'll make a motion to send this on.
I'll second that motion.
Mike is well-liked in his community, and not only this, but in the animal shelter community. He, he, he speaks softly, but he carries a great big footprint whenever he stands up in it. I was, I was privileged to join him on some Zoom meetings whenever this got kicked off. This is a phenomenal program, guys, and Cabot is extremely fortunate to be able to have us as a pilot group on this thing. It's just phenomenal. I got a motion and second. I need a roll call.
Ed?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And Ed, may I interject and add something? That I know we're gonna start our town hall meetings hopefully October about infrastructure needs and things we need in the community. But, you know, we've been needing new animal shelter, and they've got a new concept, and if we did it, we'd be the only one in the nation with this new prototype, and we'd have people from all over the United States coming to Cabot to check it out. So it could be a big opportunity for us in the animal services realm, for Cabot to be very recognized for this type deal.
Well, you're, you're exactly right. I mean, the, the ideas and the, the philosophy behind this new stuff is, is just never been thought of before. And, and it is just really, really a movement that is gonna start and it's gonna go. It's just a whole new concept, way of looking at things. But Mayor, you're exactly right. And we need to, we need to recognize that, and we need to be a part of that conversation. Because that conversation extends past our city limit signs. It does. And it's, it's another thing that makes this community as great as it is. It really is. And I appreciate your support on it. I really do. All right, you're up next, by the way, Mayor.
Appointment of Ronnie Lowe to the planning commission. He is here. We put his CV, resume, whatever you want to call it, in your packet. He's a professional engineer, Assistant Director of Public Works for the city of Little Rock. Looks like he's been there since 1996, has a lot of knowledge to bring him to the table. And I'm requesting that y'all put on counsel to accept his appointment.
Anybody got any questions for Mayor or for the appointee? Anybody?
We're very fortunate to have Mr. Lowe even want to do this with us. We're blessed to have him here.
I had to twist his arm. Yeah, we're, we're fortunate. We've got a great, great people on a lot of our commissions, and Ronnie's gonna be a big asset to the city of Cabot.
He has an impressive resume.
It is.
Yes.
I'm, I admire being able to find the time to carve out for it, and I appreciate him wanting to carve out what little spare time he has to serve the city, and I appreciate that. I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to send it to full council.
And I'll second it. I need a vote.
Ed?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mayor, you again, bro.
Okay, question. Are you okay with him not coming to council, or does he need to come to council?
I, it's fine with me. He's been here. He's done everything he needs to do. If he's got the time, he's welcome. If not.
Okay, everybody else?
That one is an ordinance. He is appointed by ordinance. Are you gonna require that to be expedited, Mayor, or ask that it be expedited?
Uh, yes, sir, because they have the meeting the next night.
Okay. I just wanted to, I just wanted to counsel to know about it tonight. That's fine. That's fine. I think that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Next item is Sheila DeArmond, appointment to the Parks and Rec Commission. She's the senior VP of First Oxford Bank and Trust, Trust Department, Wealth Management. Matt may interject here for me, because she was in the Lions Club at one time as the president. I guess she's still in it. She's served different roles. I think, I see her everywhere. Very involved in the community. She's been a coach for Parks and Rec before. Very, very savvy, very smart. Would be a great addition to the, to the commission.
Is Ms. DeArmond in the audience this evening?
She is here.
Oh, well, I'll reserve my comments then.
She's laughing.
No, she's, she's outstanding. I've served with her in Lions. I go to church with her. She's an outstanding individual, and she, she's a smart cookie.
Anybody else got any questions?
Oh, looks like they're good.
Then Matt, you wanna make the motion?
I will make the motion to send her name on to full council.
Got a motion. Give me a second.
I'll second the motion.
Need a vote.
James?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
I eat full.
You're gonna get it at church.
Oh, yeah.
You're gonna get it.
That concludes my end of it, with the exception of any community input. Mayors, anybody there wants to say anything about anything?
Yeah, at this time, if you want to come to Mike and, and, and mention anything we talked about, any input you have, because like Ed said, this is not a vote to continue. This is a vote sent at the council. We won't consider this to be permanent until the September 21st meeting. Does anyone have any comment about any of these 10 items? We have nothing on Facebook? Anything? Nope. Audience looks like they're good, so.
Well, one more time, Laura, thank you for all the hard work that you've done. Joe, thank you for your package that you put together. We had some good information tonight. We had some good information coming into this, and I appreciate it. And I do appreciate all the work that y'all do for us, especially on getting this stuff ready for this meeting. Thank you so much. And I'm gonna turn her over to somebody. Mayor, it's up to you.
Nate, Budget and Personnel Chairman Doug Warner. Okay, just an update to council. Finances look really great for the city. We're building up some cash reserves. We're considering a lot of things for the next year's budget. A lot of good things coming up, so we've been working on it for about three months. So we're excited to see where Cabot can go in the future, so we're, we're, we'll be excited to send that out to y'all in November, I guess, or end of October to start reviewing the budget. So, 2021. Police and Fire Committee, Damon?
We have nothing.
Police and Fire are good. I'm sorry for, if you have anything for Budget and Personnel or Police and Fire, any community input? Facebook? Looks like we have none. Next item, Community Development Committee Chairman Kevin Davis.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Norma and Damon, uh, I'll open it up to you first, uh,
Hey Kevin, you're blacked out, buddy. We can't see you.
Okay. Can you hear me good enough?
Can hear you fine.
Okay, hang on just a second. Let me turn another light on. All right, excuse me. I'm back. All right. On the agenda night, we had the Chamber contract and, uh, for economic development. Uh, Damon and Norma, if you have any questions for me, that'd be great. Or Amy is there, I believe. And, uh, if you have questions for her, uh, you can ask those questions as of right now.
My questions I had, I, I called, I spoke with you, Kevin, and I got them answered, so.
Okay. All right, Damon, you have anything?
He's good.
Okay, uh, before we go into further discussion on this with the other council members in the public, I want a motion and a second from Damon and Norma, so we can, uh, open up discussion.
A motion to send it full council.
A second.
Okay, now, other council members, do you have, uh, any discussion on this contract? Okay, Matt?
On item number thirteen, um, why did we change it from a comprehensive financial statement to, from an audited financial statement?
That's a good question. I don't know that one. So, uh, let me look at it.
Uh, Amy can answer it?
What? Okay.
Okay, he does.
So, last year, whenever we changed the contract, we had as the heading of number thirteen, an audited financial statement. Uh, through our attorney, Mr. Wilber, he just cosmetic, more or less, um, because we changed the wording in the body of a comprehensive statement of financial review instead of an paid for audit and financial statement every year. Um, and so for number thirteen as the heading, he suggested that we change it back or make it match the body saying comprehensive financial statements.
And that's on the annual report. It's not a quarterly thing.
What's that?
Go ahead, Matt.
That's for the annual statement? That, that's not a quarterly thing?
Correct.
Am I correct?
Quarterly is already in there. Um, the annual is what you guys discussed on instead with an audited financial statement was requested, um, to actually be paid for, um, by the city or chamber than you guys would request it, but just a comprehensive would work.
Okay, uh, any more questions from council? Okay, any questions from the public?
Facebook? YouTube? Anyone from the public? Seen none? None here, Kevin?
Okay, uh, Tammy, let's vote. We got a motion and a second to send to full council.
Davis?
Yes.
Devon? Not Ken.
Yes.
All right, goes to full council. Uh, we, we could, we could weigh the second, third, depending on what kind of feedback we get and things like that. So just be prepared. Uh, there will need, there will be no emergency clause needed on this because it's early enough to go into next year, but, uh, that's where it's at right now. Uh, so, all right. I'm done. Mayor, back to you.
Any other community development input? Seen none. Uh, next item, Military Affairs Committee Chairman Ron Waymac, and he never did show, it looks like.
Now, um, I think I've, like, whatever I had, just, uh, just a little announcement, you know, Tamara Hartgrove, she's, uh, they're working on a military families Blue Star Committee, uh, here at Cabot. And, uh, she sent me a message just a few days ago. They've got their charter written. They're waiting, they're waiting for approval. And, uh, uh, that happens. So, uh, hopefully we hear something next month. I know they've got support from the American Legion.
Okay, did y'all hear that?
Not very well. Got bits and pieces of it.
Okay. Uh, he made an announcement about the Blue Star Committee?
Yeah.
Being formed?
Oh.
Anything else, Doug? Uh, the only other thing I have is, uh, nine eleven is this Friday. Uh, American Legion's going to do a ceremony in the courtyard behind City Hall. So if you would like to come, anybody from the public, um, it's always an honor to be there. And it's, uh, and chill bumps up your spine. You watch the ceremony. So you're welcome to at ten. I believe it starts at eleven o'clock. And we'll put something on the city Facebook page to remind you, but that's the only announcement I have from Military Affairs. Any military community input? Facebook? YouTube? Okay, we'll move to general community input. Any general community input? Looks like none. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I got it. Ed first. You got a second for him, Ed?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. That's fine. All in favor, say aye.
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 Adjourn seven forty-five. We're going to go into our special council meeting next. As you know, we have three items to discuss. It's seven forty-six. We're going to call the meeting to order. Uh, we're going to have an opening prayer. So if everyone will bow their head. Father, oh great Father in heaven, Lord, uh, continue blessing the city of Cabot. And Lord, continue to give us the understanding we need that, that will make the city very prosperous and great and, uh, the one that people just want to come to and be a part of. Uh, Father, help us. Help us to help other people and help us to do what's right in all that we do. Forgive us for your failure. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen. Pledge of allegiance. We got a flag here and back for everybody. And Matt, if you got your little deal for the Zoom, okay? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
To the flag, the United States of America. The injustice for.
Thank you. That's one thing I wish we had everybody together for. It just never sounds right when we're not all together. Um, roll call, please, Tammy?
Wong.
Here.
David.
Here.
Warner.
Here.
Devon.
Here.
Not Ken.
Here.
Reed. Weber.
Here.
Seven present, one absent. We have a quorum. Uh, next items, uh, can I get a motion to read ordinances and resolutions by title only?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Kevin, uh, Doug beat you to it. You couldn't hear him. I got a motion by Ed, a second by Doug to read ordinances and resolutions by title only. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Wong.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Devon.
Yes.
Not Ken.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Okay, passes seven zero. First item is resolution number thirty-three of two thousand twenty. Please, Tammy?
Number thirty-three of two thousand twenty, a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Cabot to utilize federal aid funds for the following city project, construction of the central elementary sidewalk phase two.
Basically what this is, is, uh, the central elementary projects, we have the money in the sidewalk fund, uh, to complete this. Um, Metro Plan's giving us a hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, we've got, uh, we'll continue that project. We got one more phase left to get it completed. So we're well on our way, but, uh, we have to do this because, uh, D O Arkansas Department of Transportation Transportation has to approve it because they're, uh, I guess in charge of the funds as well.
Make a motion. We adopt resolution number thirty-three of two thousand twenty.
Second.
I got a motion by Ed, a second by Norma. Open for discussion. Seen none. Roll call vote, please, Tammy?
Wong.
Yes.
Devon?
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Devon?
Yes.
Not Ken?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber.
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Next item, resolution number thirty-four of two thousand twenty.
Number thirty-four of two thousand twenty, the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk treasurer to enter into a change order contract with half associates and to provide geographic information to district services to the city and for other purposes.
This item right here, guys, is, and lady, uh, is something that the prior administrations have been wanting to do for a long time to have our own GIS system. Um, we've worked with half. Uh, they said they could get us up and running for nineteen five. I know the City of Little Rock and other bigger cities have that. It helps, it's going to help with our economic growth. And, uh, for our future, uh, it's, it's going to be great for planning and, um, all kinds of great things that Joe could tell you about if he wants to step in. Um, but it's something that, uh, we need right now, uh, to continue our growth and continue this progression.
Uh, yeah, Mayor, basically this, this kind of came about, um, as we were working on our, um, street improvement, street repair needs list with half. And they were explaining to us that a lot of the items that we were looking to do and looking to implement would bit, we could benefit greatly from GIS program. And the mayor and I had a meeting with a couple of people from half, and I believe Sarah Wagner, their GIS analyst, is on the call with us. She can better explain a lot of this, but basically this will get us a startup to a full expandable GIS program with unlimited capabilities. And, and like I said, Sarah can better explain that. Um, if she wants to chime in, she's more than welcome. Or if y'all have questions, I would direct those to her because she is the expert in this.
And Sarah has joined us.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
So I guess let's get a motion and a second, then we can discuss further.
Motion to adopt resolution thirty-four of two thousand twenty?
Second.
I got a motion from Kevin, a second from James to adopt resolution number thirty-four, two thousand twenty. Discussion. And we have Sarah here to answer any questions.
I have a question, Sarah. We have, don't we, or maybe for Joe or Laura. I'm not sure who it's actually going to be, tends to, but I thought we have, we have the GIS markers already in place in Cabot. Is that correct? I do not know. Yet. Uh, Joe, do you know that?
If, if they are, they are few and far in between. Uh, the only thing GIS that Cabot has done in the last almost twelve years that I know about is, um, it's our comprehensive land use map and zoning map. And that is pretty much the basis of what we've got as far as GIS. This will allow us to completely, and Sarah, please jump in if I misspeak, but this will basically allow us to basically put a plan together of all of our infrastructure from streets to drainage to sewer and water. All that will go in together with planning and development. Its maintenance will help us with, uh, maintaining current infrastructure. It'll also help us get better compliance on our stormwater mapping for ADQ. Um, there's just unlimited benefits that this will allow us to, to get from it.
I would agree to that. Yes. You, there's a lot of free information out there, but if you can consolidate into one location within a GIS, um, you can manipulate it to get your, get, understand it better and where you want to go with Cabot in the future. So it's a really handy tool, um, for growth and for planning your growth. And it's economical. I, I just thought a few years ago, we had worked the county and had some GIS markers placed in Cabot. If you have, we can incorporate that as well. Right now, we are adding layers such as your roads, your, uh, your boundaries, uh, your municipal boundaries where you're growing want to be, um, all your parcels, all of that type of information. We're consolidating into a database for you to use and, and see fit. So. And, and I don't want to be mistaken. I mean, it, it never got that for Sarah. Um, I thought we just had the markers in place. Um, there was a program we had done with the county, I was, I thought, the county and the assessments office. Do you remember that? I, I was probably not involved in that, but, uh, we can definitely look into it to see if we can incorporate that, that data that you've already created. Yes, ma'am.
This is going to be good for economic developers that look at our and they can kind of map out what they want or what we're seeing. And they can see where the city's growing. And they want to buy land in this part, land in this part or whatever. Uh, it's, it's just, it will help our city immensely.
You can, you can build the layers to also bring demographic information in certain areas and those kinds of things, which those people love. They love to get their hands on that.
Exactly. Good information. And with the census coming out, um, you will have a lot more citywide data to be able to attach to your tracks and, and census information. So there again, you'll have up to date information. This, what we're
Especially with the new census on us right now, too.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, uh, this isn't something that we're building and then walking away. This is a, a database that grows with the city. The more information you want to add to it, the more we can, we can grow it to make it, uh, kind of work better for you. Yes.
We can, we can put our flood map layers on it, the whole nine yards.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Absolutely. You can develop all kinds of, um, hazard mapping, uh, develop a mapping for big companies to come in so they can see what parcels are available, what's in the flood plain, what's not, and make choices that way. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And, and we'll keep it where you can continue, you'll continuously monitor it and update it and. Yes, ma'am. We do everything through work orders. There is a, a yearly fee for hosting the, the site. So it's, it's a web-based, um, program for you guys. Uh, you log in like you would any kind of site. And you will have privileges associated with your login. Um, so you can see what, what data is pertinent to you. Um, and then you, it, we do do everything else by work order. So if you want us to update that month, we will bill you hourly for that. And, uh,
It, it, it will be a huge step for us, for economic development, no question about it, but also for insurance tracking. There's just, you can just name it and it's nothing, Mayor, except just what we need to be. Again, it brings us up where we're trying to be.
I totally agree. I do too.
Well, yeah. You're selling today.
Maybe just a little bit. Yes, sir. And we're, we, I'm working with Joe. We are starting with some basic layers, um, stormwater, roads and all the free data. Now, as we build this in the future, we can generate more and more layers for you that work to, to what you need to go to.
So Google Earth. You brought Google Earth in on it. There's, there's everything you can do with.
Absolutely. It'll have a background on it. You will, uh, the website that we have had is, uh, Esri engine. So you will have topographing information. You will have mapping with roads and street names. You will have the most current aerial imagery um, that's available. So you can all, you can just tape through all of that. Yes, sir. It's great. And the thing is, however many, much money you want to. And the thing is, however many, much money you wanna put into this, is what you get out, so we'll, we will continually update with Joe, um, the roads and the stormwater and things like that, but if other members of the council, or you're needing to make decisions on some, sudden things, then we can, uh, kinda tailor those layers to what you need, and add them as we go.
Any other questions on the Zoom callers, before I go to the table here? Damon? Damon's good, James?
I'm good.
Good, Doug? Everybody up here is good? Any more questions for Sarah? Sarah, thanks for taking your time.
Thank you, sir, for having me.
Uh, so all in favor of adopting resolution number thirty-four two thousand twenty, roll call vote please, Tammy?
Wong?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Not Ken?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next item, passes seven zero, next item, resolution number thirty-five of two thousand twenty, please Tammy?
Number thirty-five of two thousand twenty, a resolution preliminarily authorizing the issuance of water and wastewater, revenue refunding bonds, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto and for other purposes.
Okay, uh, we had an item similar to this, um, last month, uh, that we were gonna authorize crews and associates, uh, and they, uh, I was head, I headed that project up, the interest savings on a refunding, and then, uh, uh, wastewater wanted to get with ANRC. ANRC came back with a heck of a, a rate and no fees being charged to the Water Commission, so, um, I told crews, thanks, uh, for, for doing all the work you did with me, but, you know, we have to do what's right for the taxpayers, so instead of a three hundred sixteen thousand dollar savings, we have a six hundred seventy-six thousand dollar savings, um, that we, you'd be authorizing them, uh, for us to proceed and getting this refunding done. I know you've got, uh, C W W people in here, we have been here, if you have any questions, or maybe let's get a motion first, and then we'll talk.
A motion to adopt resolution thirty-five of two thousand twenty?
Got a motion from Kevin, a second from Doug, to adopt resolution number thirty-five of two thousand twenty, open for discussion.
Eric, I have a question, if, well, it's not really a question, it's just a concern, rather. If we would, if you would not have looked into this, would it ever have been found? The savings to the city, to the citizens of Cabot would have ever been found?
I can't answer that, I just know that, uh, I very much look at everything we can do.
Glad they found more money than we had, you know, to refund, um, I just kinda disappointed, I don't know what to say.
Um, that would be something that, uh, the Wastewater Commission would have to answer, um. If you, if you'd like to answer that, Gary, or.
And were they, were y'all even, were they looking at it before, were they?
No, they, they weren't looking at it.
That's my only comment I have, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
I'll, I'll address your comments, so, I guess straightforward, um, as far as looking at refinancing, uh, we had looked internally at doing that, um, with ANRC, however, as the, the mayor knows, uh, he looked at the, uh, he had to put a request into us for audit, uh, they looked at, at that, and I think that's probably where he looked at that, and, uh, we also found that Jacksonville had done this previously, so we had, uh, obtained, uh, the ideal of either looking at refinancing through ANRC, really at that time, it was only two thousand five, not two thousand seven, it was not two thousand one, uh, so we weren't looking at that, so he did bring that to our attention, uh, and we looked at doing that, uh, we actually got a rate of zero percent and one percent service fee from ANRC, and that's why we had come back to the mayor, uh, and, uh, presented the resolution, which is before you now.
I think, I think the only, the, one of the reasons it really, well, just recently, not long ago, asked for a rate increase, but yet we have money that could have been refunded, and wasn't. That's, that's.
Bonds that we are refinancing have our water bonds, they're not wastewater bonds. We didn't ask for a water rate increase, it was a wastewater rate increase, and that, as you know, was vetoed and is no longer on the, on the table, however, the, uh, the bonds that we're financing now, one of them is Briarwood, which is a sewer search yard, uh, for the, but the other two, which is ANRC in the two thousand five and the two thousand seven, by the disfor the water, and there was no water rate increase that was proposed.
I have no further comment, sir.
Thank you, Norman, any other questions? Obviously, this is a good deal, uh, six hundred seventy-six thousand dollars should be used for infrastructure, uh, it's great, uh, it's basically free money, and, uh, no cost to taxpayers, so this is something that, uh, I'd encourage you to vote yes to, um, if you don't have any other further comment. Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote please, Tammy?
Wong?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Warner?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Not Ken?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, passes seven zero, uh, now we move into community input. We have someone approaching.
Good evening, what is this all? Good evening, Mayor and council members, uh, study stop off, I wanted to just interject just a couple things, because Norma, uh, you're right, we did put in that GIS system back during my administration, and it was, and, and, and I'm not sure what all it entailed, but it helps, certainly Ms. Wagner and, and the, the completion of a, of a very fluid, uh, project, I mean, that certainly, that's why we did it, we did it during all the projects, when we had all the flooding within the city, that's one item, and only got about three minutes, and I'll make this quick, uh, that's, that's my old history hat, I, uh, had, uh, the Chairman of the Election Commission, I wanted to comment, and just to remind everybody that's here tonight, and everybody that's watching this, uh, early voting starts on October the nineteenth, goes for two weeks up to November the third, wanna say thanks to the city for allowing us to have the elections at some of their facilities, also the library is here, we wanna say thanks to them. We have eleven voting centers throughout the county, anybody that lives and is registered in this county can vote any of the eleven, we're only gonna have five, or five, I think, five early voting centers open. Cabot has one, Austin has one, Ward has the other in the north part of the county, then there's a, a couple more down south, but let me say this, I want to encourage you to encourage everybody that you know to early vote, everybody waits till the last day of the election, let me tell you what happened, it's a long line. Uh, this year, we've taken all kinds of safety precautions and measures, Mayor, to, uh, to sanitize all these machines, we have throwaway stylists that, that, that you can actually use to sign with and to vote with, after each voter, we have to have those planned, the state, uh, Board of Election Commissioners and the F T C has also sent down many different, uh, disinfectants, different things to keep all the voters, all the poll workers safe, and as you know, uh, a good majority of about sixty-five percent of our workforce for the elections, those over sixty-five, and ours are more over seventy, uh, some of those have opted out, so we will be training new, uh, voting center workers, uh, but just wanted to encourage everybody, I know that the paper's here, and we'll be putting ads in paper, but also, uh, this is a public forum that's gonna be broadcast all over the internet, I would strongly encourage, and they are taking absentee ballot requests up to the twenty-seventh of October, I believe, uh, but I think those have to be in March unless they're overseas by the third, uh, so with that being said, uh, those, those absentee ballots are available, we're gonna go vote, we're taking every precaution, after each person votes, there'll be somebody, and so that'll put a strain on our budget as well for the election commission, uh, which is funded by the county, and so the county, as you know, is strained just because of the economic downturn, a lot of the smaller businesses out in the county and stuff, so vote early, do not vote often, it's a crime, uh, but vote early, and I just appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Stubby.
Will the early voting location in Cabot be at the library again?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, if everyone could put on their Facebook feeds or whatever have, that you can reach your media, your people, I agree with Stubby, make sure you get them to get out and vote early, um, if there's only two or three people in line, less chance you're gonna get sick, less chance you're gonna be exposed to anything, uh, I know that's the fear, uh, right now, but, uh, if you get out and get it done, then you don't have to worry about being in the crowds, so, uh, uh, there's different times throughout the day, um, usually around ten, eleven, lunch, two, three, is pretty calm, not many people historically voting during that time, or early in the morning, right, early in the morning, like at seven, it's busy, seven thirty, then at about eight thirty, it kinda teeters off, um, but, uh, I would just put out there and encourage people to get their vote in. Eight to four thirty, okay. Election day is what, seven thirty today? Seven thirty, okay. Anyone else from the public? We have someone coming.
You guys will be seeing something soon, but the Cabot Chamber is going to host a Cabot, or a candidate forum for the city council races on October the thirteenth here, that'll be from top to eight P M, um, so we'll be getting that out to you soon, um, and that, the public will be invited.
Candidate forum, October thirteenth, five to eight.
Thank you, Amy.
Anyone else? Anything from YouTube? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion from, who was the motion from? Kevin, second from Ed, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes, we adjourned at eight eleven, thanks, everybody.
Bye.